Welcome to the March 25, 2024 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to wisely evaluate our options, considering the pros and cons, and help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out for our residents. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vargas, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Vargo, here. Mr. Wantington, Mr. Brady, Mr. Murray, Mr. Pajali, Mr. Coons, Mr. Crable.
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Murray?
So move.
It's a second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved in hearing, no objection, Mr. Murray is excused. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of March the 11th, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coons.
I move that we accept the minutes of the meeting of March 11th and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved in hearing, no objection. That motion is approved. We have on our agenda a public hearing for the CDBG 2024 through 2028 Consolidated Plan and the 2024 Action Plan. That hearing will be conducted by our own Nicole Grohe.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. So tonight, we are going to be discussing the five-year consolidated plan. The consolidated plan is a five-year plan. It is a document that governs the use of federal housing and community development funds. It is a strategic plan, and it helps carry out community goals for program year 2024 and 2025 through program year 2028 and 2029. Why is the consolidated plan required? It is an application for federal grant funding through HUD. It is a documentation for public input and community needs. It is also a strategic plan for carrying out public goals, and it also is an action plan to implement projects and measure progress. Funds are covered by the consolidated plan include the Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG program. The CDBG program covers housing, homelessness, special needs, and community development. CDBG funds can be used for housing, public infrastructure, facility improvements, public services. The city of Sandusky received $708,428,000 from HUD in 2023. Funds are subject to caps. Fifteen percent was capped in public services, and 20% is capped for administrative services. It's anticipated that in 2024, allocation announcements will be made. Unfortunately, as of today, they haven't been announced yet, but as soon as we know, they'll be announced to the public. Project eligibility. Funds are supposed to assist low-to-modern-income individuals and families. They're based off area and clients. They are to prevent or eliminate the slum, to, excuse me, eliminate or prevent slum and blight. They are to meet community development needs and have a particular urgency. The map shows eligible areas. The orange are areas that are eligible. Common eligible areas include public facilities and improvements, demolition clearance activities, public services, home rehabilitation, and code enforcement. Goals that were listed in our last plan in 2019 to 2024, they were improving quality and accessibility of affordable housing, preventing and reducing homelessness, enhancing the quality of life for people living in low- and moderate-income neighborhoods, promoting access to public services for special-need populations, and providing funds to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19. In Sandusky, CDBG funds have been used for public facilities, infrastructure, public services, homelessness prevention, housing rehabilitation, code enforcement, and blight Past program highlights have included things such as fair housing services, street improvements, youth recreation programming, code enforcement, Meals on Wheels, demolition and clearance activities, park improvements, home rehabilitation, including lead paint base removal activities, and OGO food pantry. Briefly, the schedule for this plan, there's a 30-day public comment period that will happen in April and May. That will start April 4th and end May 4th. There will be a second public hearing that will happen in this chamber on April 22nd. There will be a draft plan available April 4th. The plan will be adopted by the commission hopefully on May 13th. There will be a plan sent to HUD depending on the budget released. That will be May 16th, and then the program year will start July 1st. If you have any questions about the program, you can contact me. My information is on the screen. And at this time, if anyone has any comments or questions, I believe the mic is open.
It's a public hearing, so we'll entertain questions from the public as well as comments or questions from the commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Want.
I'd like to ask, in the homeless, where who's the contact? Is there a contact at the city that get home? We've got two people that sleep for since Christmas time. Mr. Brady was down there between the, behind the register and the Caranture Building. It used to be, I think, French Tech at one time years ago, but they're their everyday blankets. Chief, you've probably seen it, right? I mean, what do we do? Does anybody stop and ask, can we offer some help or?
Well, I don't want to answer for Nicole, but through you, Commissioner, President, Commissioner Want, and I'm familiar with what you're talking about with Caranture, and we actually speak with Caranture. We know those individuals. For a few weeks, they'll go get services that are provided, and we end up coming back to Caranture, and Caranture allows those people to stay on their property, so there's really not much we can do with that. What we try to do is offer them whatever assistance we can provide to them and get them services that are available. Some take advantage of those services and some do not, unfortunately.
And in the past few years, we had even at, when I worked at Adams, I'd go out in the morning and scare the crap out of you. There's two people sleeping in the gazebo, and then a guy over by, and you remember all that. We had five, six people staying there in the wintertime, you know? Just like, what's the alternative?
That certainly is a suitable use, though, isn't it, Ms. Grohe? These funds are a suitable use to assist homeless people, so.
Absolutely. It's an.
That's the question, is if Mr. Want sees that, or I see that, or any of us sees that, do we contact you with that issue, or where do we take that issue?
It's an eligible activity. We don't directly provide services, but it is eligible as a service. So if somebody would like to recommend that as an activity, we can do that. We can write it down as a suggestion.
Okay. We may need a little better, we may need a little better safety net for that, you know, starting now.
Absolutely, so we can write it down.
I know we have a great, we have a great program in place for our both warming shelter and cooling shelter, and I wonder if maybe we can somehow bridge that gap to the, to the gal that manages that program for us. Just a thought.
Mr. President, if I may, we do provide stipends and grant funding through the New Jerusalem Center for the warming and cooling shelter, and if anyone ever has an issue or has something they want to bring to our attention, please feel free to call our office, and we will arrange for services, or at least contact with folks that are providing homeless services here in the city of Sandusky.
And I, just my own observation is, if that seems to be a small issue in the wintertime, I think it's going to become a much bigger issue as temperatures warm up and people feel more comfortable. Now, don't feel comfortable, but they're better off sleeping outside now. No one's better off sleeping outside. That's, that's not a good comment. I withdraw that comment. But that's a good idea. Maybe we can bridge that. Commissioner Crable, you have a comment?
Yes, if I might. I'll just say that I think it's probably a problem maybe citywide. I say that only because I'm very familiar with face of park, taking care of it all the time, and I was very surprised this passed a year ago now. Somebody had been sleeping behind one of the benches, but underneath the cover of trees and bushes. I had no idea it was there. I had no idea. It'll get your attention when you stumble upon them, but it's not at all unusual in the summer that there's one or two people that are sleeping in the gazebo. So, I mean, just on their behalf, I mean, it's, it's not a healthy situation for them, so.
Ms. Grohe, as a suggestion, perhaps, and we now know that the CDGV money can be used for these, perhaps as you develop this plan, you could set aside some dollars for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good suggestion, Commissioner Want.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Grohe.
I just had a question about, are there any particular initiatives between the city and the county related to homelessness, those that we've engaged in in the past, and any talks about, I don't know if that's something that is possible, but I would think that the county is also involved in those issues of homelessness, so I was just curious. Have there ever been any partnerships between us and the county in terms of addressing homelessness here in Erie County?
I'm not aware of that. Ms. Grohe, is that you aware of any?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any. We use the VOA quite a bit for housing. The issue becomes when people don't want to use the services, and that happens more frequently than people want to believe. You know, the chief and the police department and any of us can lead people to, in a location to spend the night or, or even a week at a time. Mental health plays into that factor, so there's a number of different, different areas of concern and needs that people are going to need to rectify that problem.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions regarding the action plan? The public court for commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones.
I know the, the county and the city, I think, both contribute to the homeless shelter. That's probably the only initiative I'm aware of, but for Ms. Grohe, I've kind of lost track of the process. If somebody had an idea for how to use some of that money for programming, what would be the process or the procedure to, to have something, or at least make that request?
So it would be mentioned in something like this, that would be one way, and to write a suggestion down during like the draft planning process is another way. So you're onto something, you're on the right path.
So during the draft planning process, would there be opportunities for people to come together and lobby for what they might want?
Right, yeah. So that's the purpose of the public outreach sessions.
All right, and, and just one other question. Did you say 20% goes towards administration? It's capped at 20%?
Up to, up to can. It doesn't mean it is.
It can, and then there's, there another 10% for fair housing?
No, that's, that's built into that.
That's in that 20%?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Grohe, that, that target date for having that plan together is April 4th, so we've got a window of opportunity between now and April 4th for public comments to come directly to you.
That's a draft, yes. That's a draft plan.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thanks. Additional comments or questions? Now I'll declare that public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Grohe.
Thank you.
Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda items. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we'll move on. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved in hearing, no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have four items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Vargas, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of budget appropriation amendment. Item B, approval of payment for Chesapeake law of submerged land lease to ODNR. Item C, approval of change order number two for East Monroe's resurfacing project with Erie Blacktop. Item D, approval to adopt the Sandusky Preservation Design Guidelines 2024.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Want.
Make a motion that, to accept the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and declaring that all ordinances as drafted and presented to the city commission shall take effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Crable.
I'm not going to make any motions here today about making any changes or anything in any of these. I'm, I'm fine with what's before us. On item D, recent, one of the recent items that has gone through Landmark Committee has dealt with essentially a national chain, although one could describe it as, as something else as well, but I think that there are needs to be some consideration made for national chains that may decide that they want to be in downtown Sandusky. The, it's not the typical place that you find them. Typically, you'd find them out on Route 250, or maybe on Perkins Avenue, or, you know, something like that. But it's, it's, it's a situation that has caught my attention whereby you have the potential, the potential of having a national chain come in, identify a location that they would like to be located in. They've worked out, you know, basically everything with the landlord, if they haven't purchased the property themselves, and the existing guidelines are very restrictive of their being able to use their own brand, their own identity. And I would like to, I would like to have some input, not here, but after this with staff, and maybe we come up with some language that is a little bit more understanding of that. Because what I don't want to see is, I don't want to see us as a community so, so stiff, so structured in what our guidelines are that we literally prevent, you know, certain types of businesses coming into our downtown. So I'm just making you aware of that. I would be interested if, you know, other commissioners have thoughts on, on these matters that they, they share them with me or share them with staff somehow, but I, but it's something that I hope to bring to the table in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Crable. I've asked, I've asked our Aaron Blair to provide somewhat, some background information to new commissioners and to existing commissioners on, on Landmark, and exactly how that committee works, where those guidelines come from, and, and how and if we can change those or modify those. So I think, I appreciate your comments on that, and I, I look forward to each of us getting somewhat of a primer on that and getting up to speed with what we can and cannot do to, to make that a better program or make it a more palatable program. So thank you for your comments. Ms. Vargas, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Aye. And now on the ordinances.
Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Those ordinances are passed. We'll turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Vargas, will you present item number one?
It is requested a resolution be passed adopting the consent legislation submitted by the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation for the state Route 2 pavement repairs in Sandusky Project PID number 115168, authorizing and directing the city manager to sign the consent legislation and to execute any necessary contracts with the Director of Transportation for this project, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coons.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules as contained in, in accordance with sections of the city charter 14.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Snyder, can you tell us what we're, what we're doing with this piece of legislation?
Sure. This is a pretty customary piece of legislation when ODAC comes into a city, although they're fully funding the project, it's more of an acknowledgement from us that they're doing work on State Route 2 in this case that's within the city limits, so, you know, there's no financial obligation here. It's really blessing them, giving them permission to do work in the city.
Same piece of legislation we see just about every year, isn't it?
Sure, yeah, yeah, just like the on-ramps for, the on and off ramp for Route 2 that they maintain. Yep.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Snyder, what, what section or two is that?
Well, they're doing a, they're doing a section that starts at Ottawa County, and I presume they're resurfacing Route 2. I don't know the east extents, but it will go through the southwest corner of the city limits as Route 2 runs in our corporation.
Okay. Ms. Vargas, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Vargas, will you present item number two, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Smith Paving and Excavating Incorporated of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Meadowwood subdivision sidewalk project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones.
I would move to adopt this ordinance under Section 14 of the city, the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Vargas, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Vargas, will you present item number three, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Great Lakes Demolition Company, LLC of Clyde, Ohio, for the 2023 West Monroe Street Outfall Project in the amount of $97,881.15, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this ordinance, resolution under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Snyder, this is a big chunk of money.
It is.
What happened here?
So this instance, we, we came into some unforeseen with the, the downfall pipe that drains into Mills Creek was actually dislodged from the, the adjacent piece of pipe, and so we had to address that, required additional excavation. That's on the, would be on the south side, south half of Monroe Street, if you will, right at the bridge. So had we not addressed that, there would be a sinkhole in the roadway in the future. It's hard to say when, when it would have showed itself, but it was washing out. There was a void under there. We addressed that with piping, and then as we continued the project going east, there were two layers of pavement in there, two layers of brick, if you will, and near where the train crossing previously was by the old toffs went between the two buildings. It's probably, it was probably built up for that, but may have also been because of the, the soils in that area. We, when we were excavating for this pipe, the project was installing a 36-inch sewer, which is pretty substantial. It's not the biggest we have in the city, but it's pretty good size, and it was about 10 feet deep in some areas, and we got into some soils in that vicinity where there's two layers of pavement, and, and it actually ate away at the road, and we had to make repairs to the pavement in toward the center line more than we, more than we planned. And some of the curb gave way, and we had to replace more curb than we planned. That really adds up when you're building road like that, but in long term, that's probably the best section of road we have out there. Probably explains why there was two layers of brick and 20 inches of pavement in that area, so.
Mr. Snyder, we use, on most of our contracts, I presume on this one also, we have per-unit cost, so we fall back on those, and that keeps the city from getting ripped off and keeps the contractor from going broke also, I presume.
Yeah, it's, it's the fairest way to do it for, for the contractor and for us both. You know, we're not here to put a contractor out of business, and, and at the same time, when there's unforeseen issues that we come into when we're digging 10 feet deep, we have to address them. We can't, we can't turn a blind eye to these things, and, and we can't use substandard materials, so this is really the right fix for, for the situation we were in, and now we have a, a nice pipe that will drain all of Monroe Street from, from Camp Street West.
I get it. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Vargas, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Vargas, you present item number four, please.
Item number four, item one, it is requested an ordinance be passed appropriating property interests described as parcel 54WD, 54T, and 52T, and now owned by Vitanium Incorporated for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts, authorizing the city law director and/or his designee to file a complaint for appropriation in the Court of Common Pleas, Erie County, Ohio, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Want.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, number four, one, under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Snyder, I'm going to ask that you provide us with just a, I think, commission is, is aware of what we're doing here, but for the public's benefit, I would ask that you give us just an overview that I think your comments will pertain to each of these properties, so if you just share with us what exactly this legislation is accomplishing, or what, what our intent here is, that will suffice for all, all five of these ordinances, and I won't have to come back to each time.
Sure. So for all of the properties except for the LL, LL Investments parcel, that, that one specifically is at Cleveland and Remington, so that's necessary for the widening and the addition of a eastbound right turn lane at that intersection. All of these properties are part of the Cleveland Road Safety Project, which involves various intersections. Most of these properties that are affected, except for the one I just mentioned, is adjacent to or touching Cleveland Road and Cedar Point Drive. As many people know, it's a horse-kept secret, roundabout project we've been working on for three years now, and the widening of that intersection requires the takes of these slivers of parcel to make that geometry work.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Vargas, you call a roll on ordinance number one of item number four.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number ordinance number two of item number four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed appropriating property interests described as parcel fifty-three W D and fifty-three T, and now owned by Yang Properties LLC for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts, authorizing the city law director and/or his designee to file a complaint for appropriation in the Court of Common Pleas, Erie County, Ohio, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coons.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present ordinance number three of item number four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed appropriating property interests described as parcel fifty-five W D and fifty-five T, and now owned by Robert G. Shane and Helen M. Shane, trustees of the Robert G. Shane Trust, for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts, authorizing the city law director and/or his designee to file a complaint for appropriation in the Court of Common Pleas, Erie County, Ohio, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones.
I would move to adopt ordinance four-three under section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present ordinance number four of item number four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed appropriating property interests described as parcel one-oh-five W D, and now owned by L L L Investments, L T D, for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts, authorizing the city law director and/or his designee to file a complaint for appropriation in the Court of Common Pleas, Erie County, Ohio, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance four-point-four under the suspension of rules in accordance of the section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present ordinance number five of item number four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed appropriating property interests described as parcel fifty-one W D and fifty-one T and eighteen T, and now owned by SNS Realty, L T D, for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts, authorizing the city law director and/or his designee to file a complaint for appropriation in the Court of Common Pleas, Erie County, Ohio, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watt.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance four-five under suspension of rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. I will be abstaining from voting on this particular ordinance as a company that I own or am a partial owner in participated in the appraisal of the property that's being considered. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular general. We'll turn to our city manager for his comments.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I have several donations offered Park and Recs. I'd like to thank Janie Thompson for her donation of two seats, which is a sixty-dollar value, and Kristy Ruffin for her donation of one seat, which is a thirty-dollar value for the Midtown Supper Club. Also, Travelers Baseball for their generous donation of five hundred dollars towards the upkeep of the baseball field at J.C. Park. And lastly, Jennifer Ashburn for her donation of books and time for installing the reading/writing room at Sandusky Rec. This room is a space for children who attend Mills Out of School to read books and can also take the books home. If you get a motion to accept those donations.
So moved. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. That objection, that motion's approved, and here you know objection, that motion's approved. Our thanks to all those people.
Thank you. On April eighth, next Monday, which is Eclipse Day, City Hall will be closed to the public beginning at noon for the remainder of the day. Although the building will be closed to the public, city staff will continue to be in the building and available via phone and emails, and that's to dissuade people from traveling. There's supposed to be a large contingent of travelers out there, so we don't want anybody getting stuck in traffic. Finance, the deadline to file 2023 municipal income tax returns is April fifteenth, 2024. All individuals and businesses can utilize the regional income tax agency's website at www.ritaohio.com to file their taxes. Public Works, all contractors on city projects are expected not to work April eighth or will only work partial days in anticipation of the eclipse. Construction sites are to be secured for safety reasons. City staff begins the annual spring cleanup of Oakland Cemetery and Memorial Park on April fifteenth. All decorative items throughout the cemetery will be removed and disposed of regardless of their perceived value. Residents and patrons are asked to remove anything they wish to keep prior to this date to allow sufficient time for cleanup. New cemetery decorations can be placed starting April twentieth. And due to all bids exceeding ten percent of the engineer's estimate, the All Wheels Park project down at the skate park will be rebid in April. Revised legislation will be presented to the commission at the April ninth meeting. For community development, the city received six proposals for the final design of the recreation center. The top three firms were interviewed on Tuesday, March nineteenth. The department will bring a recommendation and request to enter into a professional service agreement for design and engineering to commission, which will be coming in an upcoming meeting. The housing development and beautification program continues to be a great success. The program has received over eighty applications, and funding is still available. And the land bank committee has recently recommended approval for the sale of four vacant lots for new home construction. Three owner-occupied residential structures are proposed for the lots, and preliminary site plans are being reviewed for compliance. A purchase and sale agreement should come before city commission in April. Once approved, the total of land bank lots sold for new construction in the past three years will be seventy-one. I thank W. Eversole and Ms. Gilson for their hard work on getting those out to get new homes built in Sandusky. The Sandusky Park and Rec Division entered into an MOU with the Ohio State University SNAP-ed program for programming at the Sandusky Rec at Mills Building for healthy living participants for the out-of-school and seasonal break programs throughout the year 2024. Sandusky Park and Rec was notified by the Erie County Community Foundation of being selected to host a summer intern through the 2024 Community Link internship program. Ashlyn Legondo of Sandusky, a Perkins High School graduate and current Ohio State University student, will be spending the summer working with Park and Recs. Her internship will be focused on marketing and special events throughout the summer. Looking forward to have Ashlyn join the city to help her educational journey in her hometown. And lastly, the Sandusky Easter Egg Hunt will be Saturday, March thirtieth at ten a.m. sharp. Don't be here at ten oh-two, or you won't get any eggs. The Easter Bunny's going to arrive by the fire truck's escort at nine forty-five. The Mary Go Round Museum will also open early that day for free admission and one-dollar carousel rides from ten a.m. to noon. The Easter Bunny will be available for photo opportunities as well. And that concludes my report for the evening. Happy to take any questions.
Comments or questions for city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watt.
John, maybe I should ask you on Friday, do we know what the design's going to be that we sent out? Because you got two gyms, one gym for the rec center?
Also, once that scope of work is done and we get them under contract, then we will work with them on the programming and what was decided by the community input. And so there is two basketball volleyball courts that are included. There's a workout room, a track that goes around the facility. So, all of that programming, they will start designing and get an estimate on what the cost will be, and then we'll bring that back to commission. Once we finalize that, it's probably going to, I think it's a seven-to-twelve month, maybe, design. Do you know how long it's going to take?
Through the president, it's probably a little bit less than that.
Okay. So, we'll be bringing the contract to commission for that design firm, and then, you know, once we get the estimates and bid package together, then we'll be coming back. So, it'll be sometime this year, I guess.
I guess I answered my question. Do they have one design? Like, is there a box design top view of this, what it's going to be like, two gyms, one?
I'm bidding on the same thing.
I must admit, you know, I'm missing.
So, our plan is what was presented to commission. We could send the plan out to commission that we had for programming, but it's going to be no different than what we had marketed and what we had when we did the ballot language. So, the programming that was inside that package will be what we're anticipating doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Orzak, to be clear, what we're doing with these firms is we are in the process of selecting an architectural firm. They will, they're not going to, they're not going to give us their design of this. We are going to give them input. We're going to play a role in providing input. Then the successful firm then will design a system for us. But at this point, we're hiring, we're, we are making a decision to hire an architectural firm based on their qualifications, not based on a specific design.
That's correct. And they, obviously, our budget that we have will play a factor on, you know, what materials are used and the size of the facility and stuff like that. So, we're very budget-conscious on, you know, what we have to spend with those dollars for the emissions tax. But we will be guiding them on, you know, what programs and what facility needs we have. They'll be doing all the electrical and, you know, building materials and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Berg.
Thank you. I would still like to, if you could get those to us, John, just the basic ideas of what we're hoping to have in that, that, you know, they're going to be designing, whoever selects it. So, we could at least have an idea, make sure we're still on the same page as we were on before.
Yep, absolutely. I'll get that sent out the first thing in the morning.
Additional comments or questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Orzak, did you say something relative to the rec center is coming back in April?
So, we have to have the design, scope of work and contract for the company that was selected. That contract award will be coming back to commission first, and once, if the commission approves that, then that's when they'll start the design process.
All right. So, that would be in April for the architect? For some reason, I didn't hear what you said. I thought you said something was coming back.
It should be at the end of April. Then, once they have the complete design with all the bid specs, that will come back later in the year.
But this would just be for the architect, then?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak. Additional comments for the city manager? Items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Vargo.
I just wanted to take us back just a little bit to two weeks ago and thank Colleen Gilson, Aaron Blair, Tom Horstman, and of course, city manager John Orzak. They're working very hard on parking management plans that will benefit our residents, our visitors, as well as our employers and their employees downtown. And so, I just want to thank them publicly for everything that you're working so hard on doing. I really appreciate that, and more to come.
That is old business. It's two weeks old.
See, I'm getting it.
Yes, you got it. Additional items of old business. Items of new business. Any items of new business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Berg.
I wanted to also let everyone know that thank you to Richard and Jeff, and they invited me to meet with Colleen and Aaron again around housing. And we know going forward that that's going to be, that is a major issue in our community, whether it's, it's all different kinds of housing. I'm learning a lot of new terms, attainable housing, missing middle housing. Affordable housing is just a term that's just too, you know, it could be a lot of things. So, going forward, they have a lot of ideas. They're working really hard on that as well, and I look forward to working with them some more, and that's more to come too, and I think soon. So, that's exciting. So, thank you.
Top priority.
Thank you, Richard and Jeff. Yeah, absolutely.
Additional items of new business, Commissioners? Any public comments on items that pertain to any city business? Please step to the podium, share with us your name and address, and your comments regarding city business. I'll ask you to limit your comments to five minutes.
Greetings, everyone. Tom Lamarcus, 20648th Street. My only comment is the cost overruns of nearly twenty percent on the Monroe Street project, item number three on tonight's agenda, is a great example of what my concerns are with the Columbus Avenue street scape project, and that's once you get into that ground with the shovel, you find things that you didn't expect. Here, we found a double layer of brick asphalt, or not asphalt, but brick layer of roadway. What are we going to find out here? So, I don't want to here, come to a meeting and find out that we're twenty-five, thirty, forty percent over on the street scape. There are a lot of people that love it. There are a lot of people that don't. I'm kind of in the middle. I'm looking forward to seeing a change. However, let's keep it within budget for a change. That would be unique in itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarcus. Additional comments from the public on any item that pertains to city business?
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. Several years ago, I'm going way back, old business. I brought it to the commission's attention about a house on Central Ave that was going to be condemned to be torn down, and I didn't understand why, because the inside was in beautiful shape. Did some poking around. Some friends did some poking around. You guys did some investigating, found out why it was being condemned, got that taken care of, got some people to look at it and bid on it. Somebody bid on it. They did some work on it. There was a line from the street going to the house. I don't know if it was a gas line or water line. And the outside looks great, but so far, they tore down the three-car garage. It was falling apart, and it looks like a new fence. But it doesn't look like anybody's living in this house. And some people that are in that area said the same thing. They don't see cars in the driveway. They don't see lights on. And this has been many years that this house has been supposedly worked on. I was